Call me to order and ask Councilman Cotton to listen to the president.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the revolution which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll have to excuse me, I look a little unsteady on my feet, but I put in a cast today, so. Trying to make it. Ask Turk or call Rob.
Councilman Cool?
Here.
Councilman Cotton?
Here.
Councilman Little?
Here.
Councilman Watson?
Here.
Councilman Barton?
Here.
And I ask approval of the last meeting.
Make motion to approve. Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Cotton, second by Councilman Barton, any discussion? Councilman Cool?
Yes.
Councilman Cotton?
Yeah.
Councilman Lewis?
Yes.
Councilman Watson?
Yes.
Councilman Barton?
Yes.
Motion passes, minutes are approved.
I'd like to welcome our visitors here today. Good to see Walter Lewis here again, that you're driving down. And approval of business?
Copy of the agenda is up on the wall, any additions or deletions? Here none, all those in favor of the agenda say aye.
Aye.
Opposed name, ayes have it, agenda is approved, let's present them.
First order of business is a public hearing on a retail liquor license for the group, I call that being the order, and ask if there are any comments from the floor in opposition to this liquor license. Here none, I propose a public hearing. And under all business? We need to prove that.
What are the council's desires now?
They're off of motion to approve the liquor license for the group.
Second.
Have motion by Councilman Watson, second by Councilman Barton to approve the application, any discussion?
Mayor, isn't that the, the new name of the old bank shots place?
It is, yes sir.
And that liquor license has been in effect for awhile?
Well, this is a new license.
No, no, bank shots has been there with that license for a long time?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Further discussion? Councilman Cool?
Yes.
Councilman Cotton?
Yeah.
Councilman Little?
Yes.
Councilman Watson?
Yes.
Councilman Barton?
Yes.
Motion passes and the application is approved.
And the whole business, restated bond ordinance number thirteen dash oh seven two two.
Right, we have Mr. Lewis here, but what I was gonna say, based on my conversation with the attorney and a little bit with Mr. Lewis, is that you passed an ordinance as to the form for the bond issue that you were discussing, but remember, we did not have the rates of the numbers locked. So, those rates and numbers are locked now, and this is a restated ordinance based on that form of thirteen zero seven two two. The original ordinance will not be rescinded, however, this one is being restated and will have to be introduced to show what the rates of the lock are, and I'll show you that now. And Mr. Lewis, you can jump in anytime.
The method of payment is on the first line, John explained it to me right there, it says about the warrants initially delivered should be dated in share back entry from July the first, so July the first of this month 2013 when it started, right, the interest rate?
Right, it should be three point zero, it's kinda slashed through.
Well, I was reading the paragraph B, I follow the series of warrants at the very bottom of the page.
Ah, okay.
You said it as a, July the first?
That's correct.
I would like to say on this bond issue, I think everybody may be aware that in the month of June, I guess, was the worst in fifty years for the bond market, it really was hectic, and I really thought that Walter Lewis and his associates did a very good job getting this issue done. And I just wanna, I appreciate you and Will and everybody that worked on it.
Can I?
Sure.
I've been doing this for twenty years now, and I've never seen an interest rate climate like that. The last six, four to eight weeks, have been very traumatic relative to rates, and it took some time just to kinda get a handle on what was actually going on in the marketplace. And rates went from, it was like a hundred basis point swing in just a matter of just a little time, and it was very unstable, and I have to say too, the mayor's complimenting us on what we were able to do, but I'd like to say too, in terms of how the city, you know, just cooperated with me and my organization, just holding things together, I think the financing went well overall. I wish we could've gotten rates that we had when we first set out, but that wasn't the case, but we were able to make decisions that were prudent decisions in optimum times. And the mayor, he stepped up and said, hey, we wanna do it at this level, if we could do it at this level, we're comfortable, and John graciously backed him up in relative to what the city could do. And when we got into a situation where we could get a stable environment, we actually got into the market to price. The day we priced was after a larger deal that was done in Birmingham with Sanford, and I think our rates overall were a little bit better than theirs, so.
Walter was able to get us to wait about a week, and during that week, rates actually stabilized and went down a bit, so.
Right, so I think there was a lot of decisive moves that were made relative to the mayor and John and Ed as it related to this particular financing, and I think, I think we're setting, you know, to move forward in terms of being able to provide the funding for your projects at, you know, a rate that I said, I wish it could've been like it was back in January or February, but considering what the market is and where our climate is, I know in our deal here is, when you have an upscale economy, things, cities like to see that, you know, because sales tax comes in, all these things are beneficial, but when an issuer is trying to actually issue debt, that's negative. You know, interest rates go up, and that's not a good time, so we kinda caught it where this phenomenon was going on at the same time, our economy was getting to kind of jumpstart, and, you know, Bernanke was making decisions as the economy began to jumpstart, and it really, it really put a lot of unstableness in the bond market because you had a lot of people selling off there because they felt like rates were gonna go up and they wanted to get out, and it just created a turbulent market there for about four to eight weeks. So, again, I think the city acted decisively and made great decisions, may I take my hat off to you? Did a great job, did a great job making decisions, and you did a great job just really managing this situation to where it kept me on board, it kept every, the whole team on board relative to financing, so I'm grateful for this opportunity to work again for the city, and if there are any questions, I'd be more than happy to entertain them, entertain those questions, but like I said, everything has gone off very, very smoothly.
I've heard a motion yet. Do what? You have a motion yet.
That's what I, yeah.
Yes, I've never done anything.
Need a motion to introduce.
Everybody need a motion to introduce. Thank you, Walter.
I have a motion to earn the use.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Cotton, seconded by Councilman Watson to introduce ordinance number thirteen to zero seven two two, any discussion? Councilman Cool?
Yes.
Councilman Cotton?
Yeah.
Councilman Little?
Yes.
Councilman Watson?
Yes.
Councilman Barton?
Yes.
Motion passes, ordinance is introduced, you now have the option of immediate consideration.
Make a motion for immediate consideration.
Second.
Who second?
Councilman Little.
Now, a motion by Councilman Cotton, seconded by Councilman Little for immediate consideration, any discussion? Councilman Cool?
Yes.
Councilman Cotton?
Yeah.
Councilman Little?
Yes.
Councilman Watson?
Yes.
Councilman Barton?
Yes.
Mayor Lovell?
Yes.
Motion unanimous, immediate consideration is passed, what are the desires?
After motion, we approve orders, restated orders number thirteen zero seven twenty two.
Have motion by Councilman Watson, seconded by Councilman Little to approve the ordinance, any discussion? Councilman Cool?
Yes.
Councilman Cotton?
Yeah.
Councilman Little?
Yes.
Councilman Watson?
Yes.
Councilman Barton?
Yes.
Motion passes, ordinance is approved.
We have introduction of the city's fiscal year 2014 annual budget.
Okay, I'd like to welcome you to the presentation of the city's annual 2014 budget. Just as a background, it is an annual budget, as stated, the usual procedures around March or April, we'll start getting the departments together, they'll give us what their projected expenditure will be for the fiscal year. Sometime between April and September, we'll allow the finance committee to have at least two iterations where they can ask questions, look at, finance committee in this case is myself, the mayor, Councilman Barton, and Cotton. After that, we allow the council to have at least two iterations if they so desire to look at it for their questions, and then we can go to press and have this presentation as you see here. Our thanks to the IT department for supporting this effort also. This is the proposed budget, it is July 2013, and of course, the mayor has graciously asked us to present this next. Budget summary, as it reflects here, the general fund, there is a two and a half percent pay increase across the board for all employees, that is remaining at the council's command. There's a good chance it will not be implemented October 1st, but the numbers do show this increase. We were fortunate not to have a Blue Cross Blue Shield premium in employee benefits, as you'll see later, but we did worst case it for our open window, June 1st of 2014, at a ten percent increase. The rest of it, you can see, the large reflection, of course, is in sewer where the rates have changed to poison for the issue that's about to be signed. Next. I'm not gonna read this all to you, but this is the executive summary of the budget, you can see the expected change is about three hundred and twenty-five thousand. Now, will we actually spend that? No. What this is, is a worksheet to be used if all the revenue comes in, but there is a structure to this as the revenues come in. Generally speaking, we will not hit this target more than likely. There are a couple of changes here. You notice health benefits has come out as its own slide. We did move two parks out of community recreation here and put them all into a city parks slide for clarity. And there is a little bit of increase in traffic due to the state's wish to improve all our traffic signals to LED signals. Disbursement of force on sales tax, you may wonder where all this goes. This is an estimated revenue for the fiscal year, and you can see how that's portioned to the school general fund and the sewer disposal plan fund. And don't be confused by the word sewer disposal, it's an old term, but it's basically a debt service fund for issues as the ones we just talked about. Okay, this is general government, this is my estimation as to we think the revenue will come in. You can see everything's pretty flat, of course, except for sales tax. Now, is that the entire number that will come in? No. We estimate it to be higher, but all we need to do is actually balance the general fund budgets against this. Of course, anything, I don't wanna call it extra, but anything that we think can be put towards projects, we put it in the reserve fund, next. See a little drop on the financial excise tax, that's something the city gets once a year in August, so we're about to get, the state gives us its representation of how the banks in Brooklyn did as to their loan and borrowing power, as it does with its citizens here, and it's dropped steadily the last three years, so we're expecting that the drop to about twenty-eight, next. See the last line there, the Verizon Southern Lights franchise, they are putting in that fiber now, we received part of these funds here, that's the minimum funding for the first year, after that, they'll be obligated to pay the three percent franchise fee on whatever they get on their fiber there. And you may also recall that animal control is no longer a department in the city, so we had a few animal control fees and donations which will drop to nothing here. This is general government, this is the city clerk's budget. You'll notice that there is an increase in salaries and wages here now, why, you may ask? Well, the assistant city clerk is on the verge of retirement, so we're in the process of selecting a candidate to replace her, she'll have an overlap beginning towards the end of this fiscal year, but into the next one, she's expected to leave probably around February 14th. So, we wanna bring in somebody to watch not only the end of fiscal year, but an end of month, an end of calendar year, an end of quarter, et cetera, and go through all those transitional phases with them. IT and I have been looking at the possibility of upgrading the telephone system here because, believe it or not, we're still working on the same system that was put in this building in ninety-seven. There's no telling what actual shape it's in, and all the cars are pretty much used up, so we'd like to upgrade that if at all feasible. And obviously, down here, that ninety-five hundred, there's no election this year, so that went away this year. We did give up this mental health program here, a lot of that was based on several programs, no longer available in the city. You can see an increase, the Humane Society of the Scandia Accounting, these are their monthly payments going into that fiscal year. And we do, no, go back. We do actually own that animal shelter building, so we have to have some minimal utilities down there to keep that building operational.
Can you go back one slide?
Go back, go back two. One more.
You can notice under the Christmas lights, thirty thousand dollars, and we're still in the process of replacing and adding to the Christmas lights that we, that we had, we lost a lot of the Christmas lights in a flood, when it flooded the old city hall and it was stored in the basement, so we're still trying to upgrade the Christmas lights here in Brooklyn.
And usually, there's always a sale in August, so keep our eyes open. Next, next. Police department, nothing remarkable here, you look at three lines from the bottom. They have three Crown Vics that came from a place in Oklahoma, believe it or not, they were traded in for newer models, that financing will be finished this fiscal year. Fire department, fire department building is nineteen sixty-eight technology, they are having some issues down there, looks horrible, anything from floors to walls, et cetera. So, in terms of building maintenance here, we are a little high there, but we feel it's worth it, as the money comes in, take a look for the protection of those firefighters. I might add, I didn't in the beginning, that all insurances, we're looking at a seven to ten percent increase across the board just to be safe, and then the fire chief has estimated a hundred and ten thousand for firefighting equipment. Now, what does that mean? That's Level A suits, hazardous suits, and the air packs that they use down there during their everyday operations. Public works here, we're looking at the possibility of leasing some vehicles, public works, that's some of the old vehicles now. Possibility of at least one more employee than when it becomes feasible, and an increase in street equipment as we continue our cleanup operations across the city. Municipal library, for those of you who are wondering, we still have the same staff there, we are keeping this number a little high here, depending on what happens there with the director, but so far, the staff is remaining solid as it is. Community development, nothing really remarkable there. Thank you, Steve. Next. IT, a couple new things here, Doug and I talked about, was the five-year computer rotation was put in his department, travel and training to have his protege get some more knowledge in this field, and we're looking at the possibility of four secure key locks for four of the entrances to this building for security sake. Next. Municipal court, again, nothing remarkable there. Community rec, there is some debate as to this number here, remember the community basketball clinic? That number is high, but we're gonna hold it there as such in making the clinic, which has been asked for every year as part of the budget. Tennis court maintenance, it's also been brought to our attention that that tennis court probably worked on last about ten years ago, is also in need of repair, we put something out there as funds become available to, not, not really patch it, but actually resurface it again. Golf course basic equipment includes one more new mower down here, some of this is also pro shot items. Next. Cemetery department, nothing remarkable. For those of you who remember the columbarium that's supposed to arrive there, it's scheduled for delivery Wednesday morning, that's an accoutrement out there made out of granite which will be used to house ashes from curmaine type internals. We haven't decided exactly what the cost or the logistics of that is yet. Next. Okay, city parks, if you look here, we have O'Bannon and Sporgman, which were moved from rec to this city parks slide. You have the new Jennings Park out there, Mildred Street Park, and this has been called a couple of different things, College Drive Park, it's also called the CCC Park, and one smaller park about to come around, Ann Street Park, but this is all the parks now we have in the city. And there are different phases of upkeep and cleanup. Down there, a traffic, again, we have some traffic light in here which is, we actually have to pay the state to upgrade these signals to LED, so we put some out there, signpost, et cetera, there is a mandate to put wider and brighter stop signs and some other signs out there, we have a little bit out there for that. We have until 2015 actually to finish that project. Now, this ends the department, not the department, the general fund type departments, next. Just for your information, this is the health slide, health benefit slide, this is the health costs, and actually, this number is not really true now, since we didn't have that cost increase this year, we're gonna hold that number and roll it into fourteen and fifteen, again, to hopefully not have more than a ten percent increase next year. Okay, that, now that ends the general fund budgets. Now, we go to the enterprise funds, and the enterprise fund is defined as the fund that creates its own revenue to support itself, and that's the theory, of course, here you have the municipal airport. This one ninety here is a little bit high, we're not sure exactly what the grant level's gonna be, but we put it out there and maxed out as best we could, just for safety. Again, we had the AIP grant, one hundred and ninety here, upgrade the hangar, that one went away, we get a different grant every year, so that's a minus, and you can see that the airport has enough income to take care of itself, including the state matching funds that we're expecting. Sanitation, little bit of a drop in sanitation here, also a drop in landfill use fees, we're looking into that, but they should stabilize their income. Next. Sanitation disbursements, we've had a little drop on the item solid waste piece, now what does that mean? Every quarter, we're required to report how much material is dropped at the JRO landfill at a quarter per cubic yard, so with that drop, you know, we dropped our amount of requirement to item, so that saved us a little money. We didn't pay as much as we thought for the refuse bags, now that dropped a little bit Next. Sewer, no surprise here, remember, we raised the rates in anticipation of poisoning for this issue that Mr. Lewis so eloquently presented. I'll let you just take a look at this here for a moment, nothing remarkable on the first Little increase on leased equipment, both sewer water and gas, we're looking at sharing a piece of equipment they're thinking about buying, we have not bought it yet, and down here, we decided to put some money out there with the three departments for shop area landscaping, now why? Anybody who's driven by the shop up there on Sala Road, look to the left, it's kind of just there, so we're looking at cleaning that up a little bit. And of course, down here, this is the debt service availability that the council proposed for the year, and don't be alarmed by that number, because remember, sewer disposal plant fund is gonna help that out too. Next. Gas, that's the king of the kids here for awhile, a little bit of a drop in the sale of gas here, but still holding fairly good numbers there, and you can see the beginning of this South Alabama gas franchise piece here. Two pages on the gas disbursements, nothing remarkable here, I'll just let you scan that Remember the lease I told you they were gonna share, this is Remember the lease I told you they were gonna share, this is their portion of it? Shop area landscaping, that's their portion of it. Now, again, are we gonna spend that much? Not necessarily so, because remember, this is a worksheet. If the funds don't come in, then some of these things will either be put aside or reduced. Next. Now, this is an interesting thing that changes every day, is the reserve fund. This reserve fund influx here, some of it is from bank accounts that we have, and you see this here. Now, that is a little bit higher, we're gonna take a look at that, but again, worksheet because of the next line. This is everything the council would like to see, at least put in as a wish list as to what they would like to see spent in the city. So, I'll take you a moment to look at that, or give you a moment, I should say. We've tried to capture every grant and every option here we could possibly have for any contingency. And again, as the contingencies come up, you know, it's obviously the council's option. Next. Okay, again, here's the executive summary for that budget. There's your three hundred and twenty-four, nine fifty-five is the expected change, but I don't think it'll go that high. Next. That's the way we see the fiscal year 2014 budget right now.
Last historic, is any of this one?
Okay, rather than avoid confusion, now, Mr. Thomas here, we'd just like to press the council momentarily.
Hi, Jerry.
I'm the one that asked to do that block party, some, like, back in June twenty-eighth, and everything ran, I just wanna thank y'all for letting me do it. Everything ran fine, except for the police department. I had Officer, I think his name is Officer Pete, I don't know his last name, but like, at five oh two, I had a performers up there that I had paid a lot of money for to come and be perform for the kids. And Officer Pete, all of a sudden, he just decided to pull the plug out of my DJ equipment, which, which when he did that messed up two ounce, but we got the ounce fixed, and I just wrote a statement and letting everybody know where that happened, but that was the only complaint I had about that. And I just wanna bring that to the council board and let them know.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
No other business?
No, the business.
What's your real journey?